Thanks for coming tonight. Thank you all the guests for coming tonight as we prepare our look session for the March 1st Bear County Board of Education Board meeting. We will have our welcome. We'll review the agendas, the indication will be by Mr. Kane. The presentation of calls by Wanda Bear High School Junior OTC. We'll approve the minutes. We'll approve the agenda. We'll have some committee reports, clean school. Mr. Bailey. All right. We'll listen to you guys, superintendent recognitions. Here's where we're gonna have some STEM Scholar Award presentations. We may or may not have any visitors and or request to appear before the board. Dr. Green, anything tonight?
Okay, I've got a communication report that we provided for you. If you have any questions, feel free to ask them. Tonight, we do have a presentation that's sort of the other half of the equation. Last month, we burned an uphead in our school counseling program from Dr. Christine Lobo. And those folks in our schools do a lot to support our students with the needs that they have for academic success. But tonight, we're going to share with you somewhat the other half of the story. And that is with our social worker services and updates that they'll provide. Shuvi Prasinger and Jenny Jennifer Benford are here and they're walking through that presentation.
Welcome.
So good evening. We are very excited to be able to brag a little bit about the great things that our social workers do. I have the pleasure of working with this fine group that works to bridge home and community and school together to serve our students. Okay, so these five beautiful women you see here are more than just those great friendly faces. They work as with most people in our school system. Their goal is, in the end, student success. But sometimes, we have some situation where kids might need more than just the academics that they're getting up in the classroom to achieve that academic success in the end. So this is a breakdown of our team. You saw them in that last picture, but we do try to give a school. Every school has a person they can call on. Now, that does not mean that we are not all team players and jump in in any situation we need. But we want the schools to have a name and a go-to person that they can call on. So Dr. Jennifer Benford actually serves as our lead social worker. And I'm gonna let her talk to you about a lot, some of the many programs that they work on in a day-to-day basis with our schools.
Go to the next. Thank you. So I'm just gonna talk initially a little bit about how we bridge our services for our students to their home. And I'm excited about the projects that we work on. And I'm excited about our meeting of social workers. We're pretty great. They do a great job of working for our kids, so I'm excited about it. So the first thing, I want to talk a little bit about our reading families program. Stephanie Byrd does a great job of facilitating this program for our families. We're talking about 45 to 60 vouchers per month. Families are going and getting huge boxes of food. I think the last box had probably five pounds of chicken and five pounds of shrimp. So this is not just canned beans, y'all. This is like grilled food for families. This is huge for the community. The feeding, feeding bar program, if you guys might have heard, for your kids, same program only adds up and even better. Laura Enrich really does a lot of her friends for our families. Thank you, that's awesome. So Ms. Enrich does a lot to facilitate with three different programs, three different like community providers to help us make sure that this happens for us. She works with New Path, Nothing But The Truth, and The Food Bank. We are sending home 400 to 450 backs per week to our families on the weekends. This helps feed their families when we can't, when they're not in school, right? This is huge for our kids. We also have a second mental food pantry that's coming very soon. We're excited about that. And then the other thing that's up on the screen that you may see is Proposity. So I want to talk a little bit about what that is, is one piece, and what is that? Proposity is a third-party sort of middleman for us. It's a website that we utilize to help us post needs for our students, specific needs for our students, so that people in the community can see our name and then meet their need. And they do so anonymously. So for example, if I have a student who needs some shoes for basketball, I can post that need with an Amazon link. Someone in the community will see that need, meet that need. It's delivered here to the PDC. We get back to the kid, and then Proposity will then send a thank you letter for us for that kid. It's a great program that has really helped us help students. And then the last thing on that list, I want to talk a little bit about its parent support. It's a new program for us. This is probably one of the most exciting programs for our most needy families, if that makes any sense. For a little while, we had a gap in services for our parents. We were struggling with how we support our parents for our kids who are homeless, for our kids who are truman. So we're helping meet their needs, but we're really figuring out how to meet the needs of parents. So this is kind of a gap for us for the young. Great program. We're having great feedback from our junior court judge and how this program is working. And it's a partnership with one of our favorite health providers. So how do we bridge gaps in the community for our kids? Well, we sit on lots of different community names. We sit in lots of different task force. We're on various committees. This enables us to really identify needs within the community, but also to identify ways to meet the needs within homes. Lots of, lots of different opportunities for us. The parents survey you guys have heard about, we're helping bring another one next year. The suicide prevention online opportunity, the way our parents like to play opportunities. I'm gonna move on just to kind of speed this through. When you think about school social workers, oftentimes you guys think about these things. This is how we bridge students to school, right? Most people think about attendance. Just yesterday, we had a huge meeting here in this room where we had school system people, community people. Stephanie Byrd led the meeting, and we talked about our school staff, and we talked about our attendance protocol. We talked about how can we work together to really address our attendance needs? And how can we figure out a way to sort of bridge that gap for our kids? Great opportunity for us. And what we're hoping is that these numbers on the right side of your slide are gonna start dropping through working together. I also think that my unit, my people, us, are catalysts for our school systems to really think about trauma responsive care. Trauma form cares are kind of a catchphrase, but trauma responsive care is something a little bit different. And that's something that we're beginning to focus on when we're having conversations about our kids. And this is a great opportunity for us when we're in a system to talk about behaviors, to talk about things that are impacting our kids' ability to achieve what they need to achieve. It's an opportunity for social workers to really talk about the impact of trauma. Almost done, I promise, that's the one. So we're focused specifically on Apex for school-based mental health, or school-based, whatever you want to call it, right? So for us, this has been a sort of a four-year venture for us. We work hard to bring together, bring to Barrow County a program called Apex. And you might have heard of that before. I don't know what Apex stands for. I couldn't tell you, and nobody can really tell me that either, right? And I've heard some different answers. The bottom line is, what Apex looks like for us is it's behavior health services in our schools for kids who have Medicaid and for children who don't have any insurance at all. Well, you might have noticed that there's a bit of a gap. There are also some students who have insurance but don't have any, but, and so Apex does not provide services for those. We have a little bit of money that also enables us to provide services for those students as well. How do we do that? We do that through a partnership with a company called Social Empowerment Center. They provide services right now in every single one of our buildings. That's pretty cool. And they do that with nine therapists, you can see the charm. Pretty cool opportunity for us moving forward. So school-based, school-based behavior health services for us gave us an opportunity to really consider how can we really meet the needs of our kids? So we did a short parent survey, very small parent survey, with the kids who, with the kids' parents who were supposed to stay in Apex. And this is some of what we learned. My understanding, my family has changed. That's huge. I'm so glad that our children can be sent to school. To me, this is a great outcome, moving forward. And then, parents are seeing improved behaviors at home. Parents are seeing improved mood. And parents are seeing improved grades. Moving forward. Talk a little bit about McKinney-Vento, some of our most accurate students, and then I'll wrap it up. To help conceptualize this, I want to give you guys some numbers. McKinney-Vento students are kids who are in transition. They're kids who are in transition from some of their caregivers and their homes. They lack stable housing. Sometimes they move two or three times in the school year, maybe even more. These are our most accurate students. Unaccompanied youth are high school kids who don't have a primary caregiver and are just trying to go to school. Most of these are kids who are couch starving. And now, we are beginning to really look at our foster care kids. And how does trauma impact our foster care kids? And so this is a big focus for our unit. And how can we make sure that they're getting their needs met in our buildings? Moving forward. So in January, we did a parent survey with, we contacted or tried to contact all of our McKinney-Vento parents. And this is what we learned. Eighty-three percent of them are reporting that they live with somebody else. What does that mean? That means chaos. So that means, means lots of different caregivers at home, lots of crowded. It means that their home is not under their care and control. Reason why for it. Also, a third of these kids have moved more than once. Moving forward. And then finally, you guys can review this, but from these days, take this away from this, which was the last piece. And this is that our parents may or may not be as connected with what's going on with their kids' education as we'd like them to be because of all the chaos that they're experiencing. And for me, for my unit, this is a great opportunity for us to try to figure out how can we bridge that gap. And so I'm excited to share with y'all some of the cool stuff that our unit is really focusing on, trying to figure out how to help bridge that gap for our kids.
Hold on. Stop, just stop. I know that you've tried to get through this because we have a large agenda tonight. And, and you've probably been told by folks that, you know, you only need like, you know, three, five-minute stop to stop. I need to, I need to talk to you about this for a second, okay? First of all, I want to go back to that McKinney-Vento, go back to that, one more forward, this one. Thirteen percent of parents cite tutoring as a need in our McKinney-Vento population. Okay, what are we doing to address that?
We're giving tutors.
How are we doing that?
We match students up with teachers who are in their building or sometimes in a building that's the same level. And we provide tutoring either face-to-face at their school, or if they can't stay at their school because of transportation, we're doing that virtually.
How are we, how are they being able to do it virtually if they're homeless?
So many of our families have cell phones, and they can do that virtually through the cell phone.
And how are we monitoring the progress of these students through the mentoring? Are we doing that, or are we not there yet?
I think we've got some growth in that area.
Okay, that's, I'm fine with that. But this is the most concerning of all these things, because we can get them clothing, we can give them food. That's not an issue, okay? But we can't get them what they need when they're not in class to catch up with where they need to be in order to graduate.
That's true, but if seventy-three percent of the parents don't even know what subject their children are strongest or most comfortable in, that really might not even be a great gauge, you know what I mean?
They might not even know. That, to me, is a gauge that the parents need to know, but these are students, the parents know their kids need help. They may not know what it is, but they know they need it. So we have got to address that issue. It is unacceptable in Barrow County to me to have any child who is essentially defined as homeless not getting whatever they need to be, to be assured of graduating from our school system. So that goes back to my next question. You've got five social workers. How many do you need in a fifteen thousand child school system?
Four hundred and fifty.
Okay, a lot. She said four hundred and seventy-five. I love it when you jump up here. He's saving her.
Tough question. We didn't come to you last month, but we didn't come to you this month to ask for more stat. We understand the needs that we have, because we have needs in our school system for lots of different kinds of staff. And we have a process that we go through to take a look at all of that at the same time and be able to determine based on resources that we have. How do we meet this range of needs that we have? And I think that going through that process is the best way to do it, because we have all the needs at one time. It's easy, we're gonna be one program at a time, to be able to get the idea that maybe this program has bigger needs than this program has bigger needs. So I'd rather not try and answer for new here or last month. What would be a particular number of folks that we need? We could use more teachers, we could use more administration, we need more school counselors, as we mentioned that last month. We could use more social workers. And we'll talk about all of that during our budget process. And we'll come to you with the needs that we feel like we need to ask you to find within the, within the bounds that we have. I, I just don't want to put these folks in the spot to try to answer a question like that, because we can use more of everything. And depending on who you're talking to, if I were to go to a school and bring a teacher in here, the teacher's gonna tell you that we've got a certain number of additional teachers. And all of that is true. It's all true. And that's the work of the cabinet, and we'll go through the budget process and present you some options. At the end of that process, what we can, what we can find, and I think that's the most appropriate way to do that. And so I'm really, if it's okay, you don't want Jennifer to be able to answer that question.
And I was not putting her on the spot to do that. I just want this out here for everybody to know. We have five social workers in a fifteen thousand student population. We need to address that issue. We have, we don't have enough school counselors. And we certainly don't have enough teachers who, I, I can't say this, I mean, no. All of our teachers are working as hard as they can work and doing a great job, as are our social workers and our counselors and everybody else. What I'm saying is, we are growing in leaps and bounds. And we need to be looking at this so that when that budget process comes up, we need to see numbers. And so we need to increase the number of people we have in these job descriptions, because it's not fair to them. If you just go through this list that we covered tonight, and you think about the tremendous job that these folks and our counselors have done, it is absolutely astounding to me that they have been able to do so much with so little. So few in our system are doing so much with so little. And we have got to address that in such a way that all of our students are getting the education that they need and deserve and that our taxpayers are paying for.
Absolutely, yes ma'am, and I thank you for your support. And that's the process we go through for, for the budget. So I anticipate that in the budget time, there will be some options that we have out there for you, things that we, that we need. I want to remind you, Lucy, for, for a second, actually, Jennifer, this is my first time for citizens.
You did a great job.
Jenny is in her first year in the position that she is in. Obviously, she is still a social worker and the work that she's doing. Jennifer Benford is in her first year as the lead social worker. And three of our five social workers are branded in Barrow County this year. So we've got a whole new team that's doing this work, and they have jumped in, and they have picked up the ball, and they have branched it. And you wouldn't know that that whole department is basically new. And so I'm really proud of the work that they are doing. And especially when it comes to you this year, while we're all jumping new learning curves and learning new responsibilities. And they'll present you all of those as alone in our school social work.
And I just want to commend you for utilizing your resources above and beyond the school. When I see who you're partnering with, Peace Place, Treehouse, all the New Path, that's a good way of leveraging the fact that you do only have five people and utilizing their expertise. Just a shameless plug, my wife is the chairman of the board at Treehouse. They're having their biggest fundraiser of the year on March 25th. So hopefully, everyone here will come out and support that. It's a great cause, and I know they're, they help you a lot.
Well, that's a lot.
One thing before we leave. It used to be, this might be better for you since you've worked with us longer. It used to be the summer or when breaks occurred, there was some lack of furbs. Is that, yes, my question, got any of that?
So what, you know, what we're doing with, with what was food gets is now being bear. Is trying to split, spreading out on weekends and breaks when students are not getting school-based meals. But our school nutrition department runs some of the programs in our high schools for anybody who needs students that, that, that would need access to food during summer. And so that's the world that we have to show.
At least eight years.
Yeah. And so I feel like there we are. And also know, and one of these may be to speak to this, is as a community project, our community is embracing the need to provide food and families, you know, who, who needs food much greater than we did. We have a good coordinated community effort to address food needs of our students.
Just, just my opinion, a child that's hungry at the four o'clock point.
Dr. Green, the Proposity program, that is amazing. That's an amazing program. Is there a way, first of all, I think you're awesome, and you did a great job. And I love that you call the kids kiddos, because that's just amazing. And, and sometimes I think we get up here and we, we forget, you know, we talk about FTEs and dollars and money, and it just gets lost, you know? And I just, I love it when you guys give presentations and you use for a pitch like that, because that's why we're all here. So I appreciate that. But is there a way for us to get that out? Because, you know, if fifty percent of our kids are wondering where their food is coming from, there's another fifty percent who isn't, who aren't. And I know that, you know, there's fifty percent that are struggling, and there are fifty percent who aren't. And if there's one thing I know about this community, because I live here, and I serve here, and I worship here, and I work here, and all those things, is that we have a really great group of people. And that seventy-five percent of them are ultra-kind and ultra-loving, and they really do want to help. And so I feel like if we give people an opportunity, that's why these food programs are so successful, because people really do want to stand in the gap. So if we can get this program out, how can we do that? Because, you know, I didn't even know about this until recently. So how can we do that? Is there a way that we can blast this out to give people the opportunity to fill in that gap? Because I really do think they want to.
You did that when we started the program, but it was during the pandemic and during quarantine, and everybody had lots of big issues. So Dr. Jennifer and I have talked about how we go back and revisit that campaign and push that back out, just to bring it back to the forefront.
Please do, please do. And I would love to be part of helping with that, if you need help. I would love to.
I just want to add, to be, being, having been in other districts before, when I first came to Barrow years ago now, I was amazed at how many kids we fed just at the school level. You know, I'd never seen that in the other schools I had worked at for that. A few, we had a food pantry maybe, but every weekend, we were sending, you know, backpacks full home. And it's just grown exponentially since then. And, and you'd be surprised, also, I want to give a shout out to our, our staff members, because we have a, it's set up where you can have deductions taken out of our pay. And you'd be surprised how the percentage of folks that work for Barrow County that donate every month, I'm not sure that gets done. It's, you're not gonna see more care in place.
I was gonna say, I think the action, that action system has students and vendors, the case of second to ninth, sort of, in turn. Starts with a few folks in the board, Michael and others, and just suppose they're all on chat. We talked about two folks last time. One's still in the workforce, maybe some of these things, but easy at that at every level, from classroom through to the school level and up to the district office. This is just a sample of the two groups of people that are very involved in that. But we've got that even national level in our system at every level, and we're really proud of that.
You should be.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Ms. Houston.
All right, we'll go over the invoices between ten and twenty-four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine. In the month of February, we have ten optics, paid us loss funds, eleven thousand eighty-three dollars and twenty-four cents for the cameras at the new wing of West Agnes, so that's twenty-eight cameras. The commercial controls, those paid us loss funds, twenty thousand six hundred and fifty-nine dollars for the control cards at Kennedy Elementary Schools. So those are the cards that you, card readers and stuff that you get in and out of stores with. Ferguson Enterprises paid out a care spend, fourteen thousand six hundred and eighty-one dollars for a water heater that was needed at Pulsebeck Elementary School. If you slide it up, at the board meeting on September seventh, twenty-twenty-one, the board gave the technology department authorization, spent two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to purchase supplies and equipment that were in scarce supply, and I have to come to the board for approval on each item. This is an update of how much, how those funds have been spent so far. So it looks like we spent a hundred, a hundred and twenty-nine thousand one hundred and eighty-four dollars on a hundred and twenty-six Chromebook cards, which leaves a hundred and twenty thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars to spend by Jennifer.
May I ask a question about that? It was my understanding that this was a need we had, that we identified in all schools. So is there a reason we haven't already spent that money and gotten the rest of the Chromebooks? Is there a supply issue, or is there, or we just?
I think he was able to be able to bring, he's not gonna do this unless he can, he knows that the supply chain will be able to get it to him.
Right.
So if he has time to come and report, I actually think that he's about to spend the rest of it, or a good portion of it this week on, on some hot spots. Is, is that where?
He's right there.
Okay, John, you want to take over?
Yeah, so the, the money we requested, the authorization we requested was not so much for a specifically identified need, but anticipating that as the needs came up, we might not have the opportunity to go through the bid process properly, get it to the board, and then go back to purchase before the items went out of stock again. That's been our experience for the last year and a half during COVID. And so we had a, a small amount of, of explicit need with some cards. And then several more orders for cards came in over the time. But we didn't actually have a complete plan to spend all that money all at once. It's our emergency buffer, if you will, for when things come up. And we do have another one that we'll be bringing to you, or will be on the next report. It escapes me for the moment what that was. If you'll give me a minute, I'll go back, look through my email what that was, and get back to you.
Okay, so basically, you're saying you've got what you need now, and this is present anticipating needs, you're gonna order as you need to, and hope that there's no supply chain issues?
Yes, ma'am, yes, exactly. Like, for instance, right now, you know, it was Chromebooks. Right now, Chromebooks we can get within about a week's notice. So, you know, when I need a Chromebook, I have plenty of time to go through proper channels. Six months, that wasn't the case. And I don't know what, you know, tomorrow's gonna bring, particularly with, you know, the, the current events that are happening in the world and other supply chain issues unrelated to the current events. You don't know what's gonna be coming down the pipeline. Oh, and I'm sorry, yes, I woken up now. The, the other item that we are gonna be using there offers is wireless access points. We've had some access points on orders since June, and they have not arrived. We just became aware that there is a new model of access points that are currently available. And we're jumping on them to buy what we need. We're replacing the order that we didn't get with those. And then we also have a need for access points in a variety of places. And because we don't anticipate these being around for long, we're gonna use the authorization for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next item that I have as an item of information is CPA. firm. We have two audits a year, one is for our SLO funds and one is for, um, the whole district, all of our funds, um, but we have to have a SLO audit. And so the CPA firm of Serota Madison Evans conducted an annual audit of our SLO funds for compliance with all laws and, um, code sections. And we had a clean audit. If you scroll up to page four, most important paragraph is that last paragraph that says in our opinion, American school system complied in all material respects with article blah, 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 blah. And, um, so we had no findings, uh, and everything was real clean. And the next, um, page, this audit firm actually gives us a detail of what we spent and where we spent it on each of our SLO projects. For a total of, um, 27 million, but then we got reimbursed 2.6 million, so $25 million was spent in fiscal year 2021 on SLO projects. And I just want to thank our, uh, awesome, uh, you know, facilities department and, um, also transportation IT that used those funds as we told our taxpayers we were going to use them. And of course finance department came back there, these are audit departments. So, uh, we just have a great team in place and that's what gets us these audits. All right?
Thank you.
You, good job.
Colonel.
Good evening. I'll be brief in my, uh, remarks, just as you stand, go through the photos there. Um, we, we've got a building pad on grade at the new elementary school and, uh, that's a big milestone for us. Foundations have started. Ken was sending a text message the other day with a picture of rebar tied together that would go in one of the foundations. We excited about that stuff. How the rebar showed up, you know, it's, yeah.
Sure, that's real.
Yeah, that's good stuff. I'm shy. Oh. It is, it's raining a lot, but we've had some, some good weather too and, uh, probably right along out there. We'll get to the seventies, we'll get back in the forties, so it's that time here. Every bar. Um, all right, and, uh, for Bassa, we've got the 16 individual units to make up the pod unit or deliver. They've been put together, um, and the contractor's doing trim out work on that, um, getting the sprinkler replaced and the ceilings and, uh, utilities and things like that would be next. Uh, they're moving right along with that. Uh, that, that thing made quite a splash in a short period of time, but, um, that's, that's progressing very well.
That thing was amazing.
I got a chance to walk through it the other day. Classes were easily the size of the classrooms in Bassa.
It's impressive.
It felt like, I mean, of course it didn't, didn't have furniture. Um, yeah, I really was, really, surprisingly impressed with, with the way it feels. It was very solid.
And Ken pointed out too as well, the skirting material will be the same as decided on there, so. Put it more in, just put more in more.
Yeah, I was wondering what was going to go on the bottom.
Yeah, that was my next question. It's all in the skirting.
Yeah.
Well, it looked like a trailer and it's.
It's not the, it's not the, I don't, you know, plastic skirting seal and other things. That gets landscaping around it and it looked like it's been there.
Right now it kind of gives you the vibe of, um, back in the old Winder Bear High School days of the social studies building. It sort of has that kind of a personality, you know? It's just sort of sitting there to the side, but it doesn't look bad at all. I was pleasantly surprised.
It's about maybe 20, 25 steps from the building.
It's very big. It's very big.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Doctor Moten.
Good evening. Teaching and learning will have several items of content on the next meeting agenda.
It's banks.
Not this time.
All righty, we'll move on to the consent agenda, new business, um, school food nutrition.
Um, this evening I've come to ask for an alternate vendor for our paper products. Our paper supply vendor is unable to supply us at this time disposable trays. We've had, um, issues all year long, I've been on and had to find an alternate vendor for our paper needs and we previously spent 24,000 and another purchase put us over the $25,000 threshold. So at this time Southeastern Paper, our usual vendor of paper, um, cannot supply us with, um, with disposable trays and they don't know when they'll have any available. It's been a month since we've received any. And our alternate vendor has them at the moment and will deliver them in a week to us. They just sort of, um, give you an idea, we don't use disposable trays for every meal that is served. The, um, that we have, the principals are alternating with, um, the students. They'll have a rotation schedule and half of them will eat in the cafeteria and half will take the trays back to the classroom. And so the students are even in the cafeteria, even on what we call the real plastic tray and the students carrying the trays back to the classroom because we're so short handed to staff that they're using disposable trays. And plus we, um, we transport meals to two schools, to the Ox School and the C5, and we need the disposable trays for them too.
It's time of the essence. Do you want us to vote tonight or?
We need to see that.
Yes, please.
So how much in a year are we spending on disposable trays? Um, I realize this is federal funds, but even so, how much, how much are taxpayers spending on disposable trays?
I don't have that at this time.
We get anything.
We, we only have those.
You spent 24, so that's 54.
Now it's back in, um, October.
Yeah, that was the beginning of the year.
And we purchased, um, real trays to get everybody by so we weren't using so many disposable trays. But we just don't have the staff for the ones that are going back to the classroom. And we don't have staff to go to the classroom to pick those trays up and bring them back to the classroom.
Disparate times. Plus they're disposable, which means they're plastic.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll get it. Thank you, Jeff. Thanks for all you do.
Thanks for coming.
Mr. Sinclair, you back?
Yes, sir. Okay. As printing and copying costs continue to rise, uh, the need for a printing and copy management platform became apparent. Uh, industry standard PaperCut, I'm sure probably most of you have heard of it, uh, was the software we chose and an RFP was posted. Uh, four vendors responded to our RFP. The low bid respondent is SOS. They are the district's currently contracted copier provider and they are not adversely listed in the SAM.gov database. Um, their response also, by the way, includes three years of support. Uh, so in addition to the PaperCut licenses and server installation service for which the RFP was posted, we also will be purchasing card readers for each copier so that staff can log into the copier just using their badge, their existing badges to scan instead of having to type in their email and, uh, password each time. And we're also parts, purchasing, uh, per copier installation services for the PaperCut software. So there's two parts of PaperCut. One is, uh, you install a server with the software that manages everything and then each individual copier has to have the software for PaperCut installed on it as well, so it will talk. Um, so there's two different pieces. The card readers and the per copier installation services can only be provided by the copier owner who is SOS of Athens. Um, the cost of purchasing and installing these cards and PaperCut copier is $23,887. So that's on top of the bid response. Uh, but this cost would be a fixed cost from SOS regardless of who won the bid. SOS would be the one providing those components because they're, those are their copiers just under lease to us. So the, uh, financial impact is $31,932 PaperCut licensing from IT SLO funds and then 23,887 for hardware installation services from IT SLO funds for a total of $55,819. Uh, and again, that's getting us three worth of service. Uh, so the superintendent recommends awarding the purchase of PaperCut print management software to low bid respondent SOS of Athens, Georgia in $31,932 and additional card reader hardware and installation services to sole source provider SOS of Athens, Georgia in the amount of $23,887, all of $55,819.
Questions, consent agenda? Okay, thank you, sir. Next.
Okay, these, uh, districts, Microsoft licensing, that's Windows, Office, uh, email, Microsoft Teams and antivirus and the whole suite of products we get from Microsoft, uh, is due for renewal. This expires, uh, in April of this year. An RFP was posted and six vendors responded. Um, I've, this is the first for me, uh, on Thursday, this last Thursday afternoon, a low bid respondent Soft Choice withdrew the response. They would not provide me an explanation beyond to tell me that they would not be able to honor it. So, uh, the next lowest bid respondent, Crayon Software Experts, met the terms of the RFP and is not adversely listed in the SAM.gov database. The financial impact is $181,426.67 per year from district's SLO technology funds. The superintendent recommends awarding the contract for Microsoft EES licensing, that's the umbrella that all the functions are, are gathered under, to low bid respondent Crayon Software Experts of Dallas, Texas in the amount of $181,426.67 per year, renewable yearly maximum term of five years.
Consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, can we go back to the previous, uh, slide number two, PaperCut printing management software?
Yes, sir.
Uh, John, the, the, I see where the 31, 932 is in the, uh, report, but the 23, 887 is not, would that make any difference in the bid process for that?
No, we, we bid that piece. We already, that piece has sole source from the, from the vendor. So we got it from them. We, we, if we want to put hardware on there, we have to get it through them. So we have a quote from them and a sole source letter from them. And then the, the licensing itself and the server installation is the piece we put out to bid. Didn't want to give you an incomplete picture and let you think that was only 31, nine, that the whole project cost, that's the only piece that we put out to bid.
So you're using them to install it because of that sort of back?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's our hardware. They won't allow anybody else to put card readers on there and then to modify the software on their copiers.
Comfortable with that, Ross?
I am, I am. We went in.
I want to make sure I understood.
Yes, sir. We did some comparison shopping, um, to make sure we weren't being gouged and, and actually the, the price is really good. And, uh, I think the, their price of PaperCut is also, uh, that good because PaperCut kind of, the, uh, the deal being the vendor who already had the copiers.
Thank you for having me understand, man.
Yes, sir. Anytime.
Okay. And that's going on the consent agenda, the Microsoft licensing renewal, consent agenda? Okay. Dell servers.
All right, last one for me. Um, servers providing log on and printing functions at 15 schools are near end of life and out of warranty. They're five plus years old and are due to be replaced this year. An RFP was posted and 13 vendors responded. Uh, low bid respondent Dell met the terms of the RFP, has similar business and is not adversely listed in the SAM.gov database. So it's $77,225 from ITS funds. The superintendent recommends authorizing the purchase of 15 Dell servers from low bid correspondent, uh, respondent Dell of Round Rock, Texas in the amount of $77,225.
Consent agenda? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Ms. Houston.
All right, our spend department needs iPads, so the superintendent recommends the Barrow tax school system purchase 100 iPads and 100 iPad protective covers to support instruction of our specialized student population at each school. Costs $34,913 to pay out IDEA American Recovery Federal Funds. Um, because the specialized student populations will be provided iPads to be used for small group instructions and like individualized learning and for students with disabilities who may require extra support or remediation. Devices will also be used in many after school programs for students with disabilities are served and our students requiring assistive technology and or communication support. Students are able to access web based software or applications to engage in the work aligned to their IDP goals. And this was sole source, um, so we couldn't really try to get any bids and so they're asking for $34,913.
Questions?
Does that just cover the students that we know need it now or is there an area in there for growth? That's probably a John question.
Is a, is a Brebo.
A Brebo question.
But I will get that back to you. But I'm sure he put in there for what the needs would be this summer. Maybe they've identified that summer, but I'll, I'll, I'll make sure.
Thank you.
Do you want to consent agenda Lynn or do you want to hold off?
No, we'll, we'll.
Okay. Thank you. Doctor Rin.
All right, just making, um, to get to the, um, recommend, recommendation on action item, I want to first take us on stroll and then read one. Um, to just give you a little bit of history of where we've been in our efforts, uh, to create data dashboards and where, uh, and bring you up to our current proposal. So first of all, we will sort of talk about what we've had through the years and our first, we'll continue. Our first efforts at a dashboard were not really a dashboard at all. They amounted to, uh, tables and charts and graphs that were developed at one time a year that were put in notebooks that were quite thick and hefty, uh, and shared with each school, got a notebook with their data and in comparison and that sort of thing. So I got it pretty much once a year. It was static. You had to really dig to be able to find what you were looking for. And if what you were looking for wasn't already included in a table, then you might just have to do that because it was very labor intensive, uh, to be able to put that together. Well, that was a number of years ago. Um, that progressed to where we were putting that on, uh, in a digital format on shared drives that school personnel could, uh, just use, get to it on their computer. But again, it was static reports, it was not really interactive, uh, and that sort of thing. A few years later, uh, we, um, engaged a company, um, to, called Tyler Pults that had a data dashboard software and we got that and a picture on your right at the top will give you sort of a sense of what that looked like for us. Um, it was interactive, uh, it was more current and, and just within a few days you could get data updated. Um, uh, the problem with Tyler Pults was that to create new reports, um, we would have to submit a request to the vendor and their development team would develop the reports that we needed and send us back a, a charge and a, and a, and a product. Um, and that got to be pretty tedious for us, uh, and expensive. And so we decided that we felt like we could do better than that. And so then we went to invent our own internal product called Barrow Pults, uh, using an expansion of a product that we were using for other things, um, called SAP. SAP is not an acronym, that's the name of the company, but we added on to a package that we already had and some of their software that would allow us to basically control that process on our own so that we didn't have to contract a vendor to develop new reports for us. Um, we could do them in-house. Well, the problem with that was this is not the easiest software to use. So it took lots of staff time. So we're not waiting on a vendor to do the work, but we're doing work, so we control that and it's just taking a little bit of that time for staff to do that and it's also just very, very difficult. That was not software that was easy to use. So, um, we embarked on a process to be able to determine what would meet our needs currently. And we had some cafeteria, I say we, there was a group of folks, um, led by myself, Jenny Persinger and Amy Wright, who is in her department as our data manager. Um, led by myself, Jenny Persinger and Amy Wright, who is in her department as our data management folks. Uh, John Sinclair, Jamie Gordon from our technology side of things, Jimmy Roundtree, and Paul Vallas from our. Uh, communications team, we're all part of that group of people that examined this to. Uh, find a better solution than what we had. And so our criteria for an upgrade. Was we wanted something that was easy to use, not just for the developers. Ease of use, although that was very important, but also for the users. For the, the anybody that wanted to, that had need of data in our data dashboards. That they would be able to easily be able to get the information that they needed. Another criteria was that we wanted it to be real time or near real time access to data reports. So we didn't want folks to have to wait a month, wait a year, or, you know, long periods of time to be able to have access to that. We wanted them to be able to have access to the data and, um, in a very timely manner. Um, within, you know, a day or so of that data being, like, being, being available. We also wanted access for a wider range of users. Under our current Bear Paltz and under the previous iterations. Then generally, uh, access to the data was limited to a small group of people. It might have been principals, assistant principals, instructional coaches, just the leadership group at each school because every license is added to the cost of the. Um, programs. We wanted something that all of our, all of ours now could use. Uh, but also it could be something that could be pushed out and community members could access data at an appropriate level for the community. Um, and then that gives us to the last point is the ability to easily create internal and external. Visually appealing, customizable and manipulable dashboards. That's helpful. Um, but basically, uh, you know, these days we're used to seeing data in visual formats and that is, it makes it quick. Uh, for us to analyze data, we wanted to make something that was, um, uh, met our standards in terms of visually appealing, in terms of things that were useful. For folks to use, we wanted to be able to customize them to meet our needs and have control over that. Um, and so those were the criteria that we established as being important. Um, for us in looking for a replacement of our current Bear Paltz. Um, the next diagram just really shows you a lot of the companies that are in this market. Uh, and it puts them on a quadrant and that quadrant has four sections. Um, uh, or for two, two axes, if you will. Um, the bottom axis is completeness of vision, meaning that these companies that were further to the right. Um, uh, had a full vision of what a data dashboard, data analysis tool should be able to do. And the other axis is the ability to execute. And so higher up than you go, then these companies have the ability to do it all. So you can have a, a really good vision, but if you didn't have the ability to pull it off, then you would find yourself in the, in the bottom line quadrant. Uh, we were really looking for somebody that could do both of those. So we were really looking at the companies in that top right box. Uh, that were considered leaders and Microsoft was one. And, uh, the particular product that is the primary component of what they offered was, is called Power BI. Um, it's a relatively new piece of software. Um, and then, uh, in that same quadrant of, of having a good vision of what data. Uh, analysis software and presentation software should do and the ability to execute was Tableau. So those were the two primary, um, uh, solutions that we saw. And so, um, our team had, uh, looked at both of those products very closely, um, had, uh, uh, had demos. We, um, did, um, I would give some training for each of the products to sort of find out some of the things on the backend. We talked to, to people around the state that were using each of the products. Um, and determined that based on all of the criteria that we have established and I share with you in perfect reply. That Tableau was going to be the best. Product or I recommend to you. Um, it was, and I want to show you some examples so you can see them yourself here in just a second. It allows us to be able to develop one of the variables from our strategic plan, which is that we are going to create an interactive dashboard for our public. And, um, this will certainly allow us to do that. And I'm going to show you an example of what that might would look like in just a second. It allows us to develop an internal dashboard that goes more in depth. So teachers can get access to reports related to the students that they teach and, um, that sort of thing. Um, you'll see a video, um, talking about what that like, or what the. Using Tableau for that purpose would be able to do for us. So I would like to just start off by going to the website of the Highland Public School. This is their annual report. This is aligned to their strategic, uh, plan. And this is the kind of thing that they have on their website that's accessible to anybody, uh, including us. Um, they're in Washington State. And, uh, it basically outlines their roles and then you'll see some performance measures related to those. And so Jenny's just going to sort of tap through a few of these and I'll show you the kinds of things that folks can see. We'll start with student demographics. That's always an important, uh, thing for folks to be able to look at. You see that they put that there in graphical format, makes it easier to see and better read. You'll notice the box now she's slipped in and she can go down to select any school within that particular district. And the data will adjust to give you just the data for that particular school. If you click on one of these bars and hover over that, then you can see the four specific data related to that particular item. Um, that's listed there. So it is, uh, manipulable, but at a level that would be appropriate for the community. We don't want them showing down to a particular student level because they're getting into competency salary and that sort of thing that they can learn. About any school within the district, uh, and that sort of thing. We're going to move over and look at another, uh, piece of information. This is an example of their, um, data dashboard for high school graduation. And you'll notice that there's a couple of boxes there in the middle. And I think that one of them allows school selection. And then the other one that allows you to go back and select a year that you're interested in. I think the one that does, you're actually has some arrows. You can now, uh, use the arrows to sort of scroll back and forth across the years and large, large. Uh, adjust for those, uh, particular years. And so we really want our stakeholders in the community, our parents, our business owners, others in the community to be able to see the progress that we're making. And our strategic, uh, plan and, and these important areas of success of our district and have a little bit of opportunity to, to, uh, drill down on that data a little more. The other thing that is here that I want you to see, this is a video. Um, this is with the Sparky Ann School System and they, the person on this video, and it's only about two minutes. But he's going to talk about how they're using, uh, Tableau in internally. Uh, for their dashboard and also some risk prevention, some risk, early indicators of students that are at risk and need, uh, more attention. And I'll let him speak for that. I'm here.
That we can get them tools to help them be more effective at schools, be more effective teachers. Um, that really gives me excitement. We can get more kids to graduate, more kids to post secondary, more kids to college. That's really what I'm education for. Their early warning system is really exciting. What we did is we had a researcher study seven thousand students, most of whom had graduated, some who didn't. And she told us, what are the things that you would have done to predict students dropping out? Every single day we're analyzing these tipping points and we're delivering it to administrators, counselors, teachers' desktops. So they can see how their kids are doing on these tipping points in elementary, middle and high school. And it's pretty fascinating. About eighty six percent of the dropouts have early warning signs or tipping points. The goal was to act early. If you see them getting exhibiting warning signs, can you get to them early and support students and keep them in school? If we can do that, we really believe we can get to our goal. We have large amounts of data and it's all over the place. SAT data, we get state test data. Um, we have student attendance data, teacher, teacher attendance data, everything. We just, we have volumes of data. In databases where our student management systems, business systems all over the place. We're, we're building off the SQL Server and then we're using Tableau to visualize the data. And every single employee or school district has access to see the data for them that affects them and their study, their school, through their user authentication, web based school. So the fact that it can bring them together, they don't have to do it and it does it daily for them. Uh, is just a huge workload reduction. We don't want them spending hours and hours and hours creating and sales for sheets. We want them packing on the data and still able to take care of my dream of the dissertation and actually to deliver it to the entire school district. So it's been pretty exciting. We'll see that happen.
All right, just talking a little bit fast, I'll make sure you didn't miss these things. First of all, we talked about, uh, uh, act early, early warning signs. That's clearly what we want to do. We want to be able to identify students at the earliest possible point. That they're beginning to have difficulty and may be getting off track for graduation so that we can intervene. Um, all the way down to the elementary school level. The other thing that he said, which is very true, is that we have large amounts of data and it's all over the place. And so we want to be able to bring that data to bear and bring that all together. Um, and then the last thing that, that he said that I should want to highlight is the fact that we can bring it all together and they don't have to do it. We don't want them spending hours and hours and hours creating themselves spreadsheets. We want them acting on the data. And that's exactly what we want. Not just our graduation specialists, um, who are really focused at the high school level, but all of our staff. Be able to have the data they need, be able to make database decisions, be able to act on that in a timely, uh, fashion. Uh, and to be able to do that instead of compiling the data into spreadsheets and then analyzing it. By the time they spend all the time doing that, they're not even really to effectively act on that. So that gets us to the recommendation. So the superintendent recommends awarding the development of the next burden of the district's internal and external dashboard to custom tech software. In the amount of seventy five thousand one hundred and forty dollars for year one development licensing and posting costs. And sixty eight thousand two hundred and forty in recurring year two and beyond for hosting, licensing and support costs. Uh, these funds would come from unbudgeted reserves. Couple of things that I'll mention, we're not just purchasing licenses to the software, but we are getting the services of developer, consultant. This is the preferred developer that was recommended to us from our academic campus provider. Uh, they, uh, he has the sole ability to be able to insert our internal dashboards into our academic campus products. So that we can, teachers don't have to go, teachers can just, any of us has to go anywhere else. To line into a different platform to be able to access this data. It's built right in to our, uh, to our academic campus, um, products. So we're getting both the services of a consultant, developer, as well as the software processes that we would need. Uh, everything to develop our internal and external dashboards. And our timeframe, one, one last thing, our timeframe is that we want to be able to roll this out and have it ready to go for the next year. That's a, that's an important piece. Uh, one of the reasons that we're asking that you approve this, even though it's from high budget reserve. We could wait and build it into next year's budget and then come to you with a proposal like this budgeted that that post coming here behind the process. And so we'd like you to consider, uh, doing this, um, in this cycle of the next, um, board meeting. So that we can engage with these services and we're starting that whole about to be packed for, um, just sort of the most.
Is it time for questions?
Uh, this.
Okay, can we go back to the first page of this presentation?
We can.
Not the first page, first, the first page of this particular IHR model. Because I was here for all that other stuff. Go past several couple of pages. Okay, keep going. Right here, this is in. Um. This is, I, I understand this is how in public schools annual report. But their foundation includes equity instruction, relationships and support. Are we using these same foundations or is that? Okay.
We are going to use our strategic plan.
Got it.
And so that was just for you to be able to see an example of how a district has used these products, able to do their strategic plan. Our strategic plan will be based on the plan that is approved, um, in the fall, whenever we approve.
That's fine. I just, because I didn't like the wording in this because.
That was only a real good example that I could be able to pull up, trying to show you now how the interactivity would work and that kind of.
Okay, as long as we're using ours, fine. The other thing I noticed in this and going through it is that the information that they had, this was for twenty seventeen eighteen school year. And this is twenty twenty two. I'm hoping if we do this, if we fund this, this is going to give us real time same year information, right?
That is absolutely our goal is that we can have data posted as, um, as close to real time as we, as we can get it. If you think will, would be within the current, you know, certainly for things like demographics back at the, at the current year. Um, and then as additional data gets removed each year, then we would be able to quickly get it, you know, posted so that we can basically, we can talk to data.
Real time. Okay.
So everybody blocks their man, whoever's responsible for the data will be able to input it. It won't have to all go through.
Well, all the data exists in different places.
Right.
We've got data in academic campus. We've got data in lots of other places. We'll pull all that data probably on a nightly rotation into a data warehouse that will sit, um, on a server outside the actual. Input campus, for example, or units or wherever that data may originally get inputted. It'll import into a data warehouse and then these reports will run on top of that data warehouse. And so things like attendance, for example. That data would, on an overnight refresh, would come into the data warehouse. These reports would be built, would be built to look at that data warehouse at the, at the end of the session. Uh, so when I say real time, if you don't have to pay for that.
With DARS.
And we get things like test results that would go in, we can get the results that would then be put into the data warehouse. As soon as we had it in the warehouse, then the, um, then the reports would be available. The only thing we have to do different and build out is if we get a new type of data, something that we're not already tracking, have never built a report on before. Then that would, then we would need to then develop that report. And that could take a little bit of time, but we think because of the ease of use, that even that would be quicker than we had been able to do it.
Can you, Mr.?
Just go to the, like, what we got, as Lynn said, two seven, seventy eight, and are they still using this?
Um, that, I, that would be my understanding. I didn't, I didn't talk to anybody at Tyler. Yeah.
What are they using in town?
Yeah, I will tell you, there's many, there's several systems that we have talked to in Georgia that use both of the products that we consider, Power BI and Tableau. And, uh, we got good reports on Tableau from, uh, Henry County, Volte County, uh, Atlanta Public Schools. All of which are still using Tableau, all of which find it to be very easy to use and to meet the needs that, that they have. I think those are primarily using that and it, for one of two things. Either they're using mainly internal or internal dashboards like you heard in the video. Or for COVID related data, and I think we were all well tired talking about COVID related data. And I didn't really want to show you. I'll show you an example of how Henry County is using Tableau to present their COVID related data. I thought we would look for something, yeah, more exciting and I saw was looking for something that's used.
There's a lot of, one lot of things we totally use it in turf, use these type of things internally. And we were very specific that we wanted something.
Internal and external.
That we could, you know, turn on those ones we need to and not, a lot of school districts don't put that data out like that, but we definitely want to. We, we've been doing it, but it's been, take it from this data, put it into another chart, put it on the website, take it down from the website, put it up on the website, that's the type of thing. And I've, I've been kind of hounding them for something that pulls the data and it's there and so people can see it.
One stop shop.
Yeah, yeah, instead of having to wait a month for somebody to have time to do it.
Can you talk about wide range of users?
Yes.
I know our personnel, this, this, I use it so much.
Well, um, there would be two different dashboards. It would be a external dashboard that would be accessible to the, if you are. They would have a little bit of ability to manipulate the data. Like you saw in the example where we were able to go from district five years to school next year. That would be the kind of, um, oh, for year to year. That would be the examples and kind of ways they would be able to implement that data. So if they wanted to compare Holstein Elementary School this year to Holstein Elementary School last year, they would be able to go that far. But that would be kept separate from our internal dashboards because we have to protect all of our student information, we have to protect all of our staff information. So we don't want there to be any opportunity for somebody in the public accidentally drilling into the system to be able to see the other data. So, um, the other data then would be internal users only. It would be based on credential. It would be based on credentials that, um, relate to the person's top function. So they would be able to see what they need to see. So teacher persons would be able to drill down, be able to see all the data related to students in that teacher's class.
Good morning, thank you. Anything else? Consent agenda? Good job. Thanks for your. Mr. Colonel.
In our first item tonight is architect recommendation for fine arts facility at Innovation Campus. Our W E committee met in November, last year, to discuss upcoming facility needs, including a fine arts facility. Uh, this would be a facility available to not only Bassa, our district, but the community at large. And so the first step of that process, if you want to know, three-year process, we're getting a new facility in place is to assign an architect, um, coming in beforehand, batches, and more, provided proposals for us, along with other architects in December of 2017. It scored extremely well, but the fees remain the same as, as they originally submitted. And the work they've done on prior projects have been exemplary for our district. Um, so the financial impact is, uh, 5% flat fee on the cost of construction. And that leads to our recommendation, the superintendent recommends a critical cutting in beforehand batches and more architecture services for a new fine arts facility at Innovation Campus.
Where's this facility in the grand plan over there? What step is it?
Okay, um, Bassa two.
Time to remember.
Yeah, Bassa two will be next.
Which is, okay, help me.
All right, so the perimeter, we talked about the perimeter, you know, you can drop, right off in the morning, you ride the river.
Oh, gosh.
All right. So look to your right, we have the pod.
Okay.
It's going in, fine arts facility would sit next to that, and Bassa two would be beyond that, all inside the perimeter. We still have that sort of north campus lawn intact as you look out at Bassa.
Okay.
But pod, fine arts, Bassa two, sit just inside that perimeter.
Okay.
In 2005, so Bassa two, 24, fine arts facility, 2025.
Anything else? Consent agenda?
Our next item is, uh, Bear Community Foundation Improvements and Center for Innovative Teaching. Uh, for a number of years now, probably four, five years, foundation has worked with local community, school system, SDCA, which is the Sustainable Design Lab to, of Atlanta, and UGA, called Environmental Design, to develop conceptual site proof plans for the Seapit Campus. Uh, the goal of this project is to create a local, regional raw site activity and improvement of ground at Seapit. Uh, the board signed an agreement with the foundation in 2019 whereby the foundation would raise funds for the improvement of Seapit Building and Grounds, with the school system managing the improvement project. So these initial improvement pieces would be site, um, grading, storm work, playground, other amenities, walking trail, and so forth. Um, and this, this arrangement would be something similar to what we have in the county for Innovation Amphitheater and turf fields. They provide funds. We spend the funds through our, uh, business services department, purchasing policies, and, uh, and complete improvements. So our recommendation is superintendent recommends allowing Bear County Schools Business Services to receive funds for Bear Community Foundation for capital improvements, the Seapit Building and Grounds. Bear County Schools will issue purchase orders and payment with architects, engineers, contractors, and other vendors as necessary to complete the improvement part.
Questions? Consent agenda?
So you will.
Okay.
My final items tonight is naming a Winer High School baseball field. Um, I normally don't read through all the texts, but I'd like to do that on this one. Uh, the Winer High School Governance Team recommends naming the baseball field at Chimney's Athletic Complex. A longtime supporter and donor, Mr. Kevin Black. Little background on that. Um, years ago, the softball field at the Chimney's Athletic Complex and the complex itself were named after longtime supporters of youth athletics in Winer, Mr. Randy Spratlin and Mr. Charles Maddox. The school governance team therefore believed that the student's name, the baseball field after Mr. Black, for all he has contributed to the development of youth baseball in this field in particular. Mr. Black has been instrumental in developing facilities at the Chimney's Athletic Complex for the past 20 years. He's given a tremendous amount of time, funds, and materials to improve this complex and make it one of the best venues for youth baseball in our area. Um, Coach Ryan Smith is here with us tonight, uh, head baseball coach at Winer High School. We appreciate him being here with us. Um, he can help answer any specific questions that you have. Um, but, but I can tell you just with my experience with it, um, Winer High School used to play in the rec apartment years ago. And Kevin Black was one of the instrumental people in, in saying, if I could have a venue for Winer Bear, like they've got their own venue. And it was more than just putting a field out on, on some property. I mean, he had a vision, and he really brought that vision to life, um, over years and years. He played for Winer on the state championship baseball team, graduated from Winer. His son played for Winer. His son's been long gone, you know? I mean, he continues, uh, to support that program. And it's not just dropping a check if something's needed. I mean, he's, he's involved. I think Coach Smith, Coach Smith would tell you that if he needed anything, he could just ask Kevin. He, you know, he helped with it. But there, there's a lot to this, and like I said, it's not just money. It's not just the lights, the grading, the outfield wall, the infield tarp, the batting facility. We could go on and on with that. But again, it's that vision, him thinking about the cards, being an outfielder watching the game, sitting up on that field. But that's him. Watching a game out there, it's, it's great setting. Um, and so there's just a lot that goes into it, to create a baseball diamond, not just a baseball field. And, um, and so our recommendation is really, um, it's coming from the school governance team at Winer High School, is that the baseball field at Chimney's Athletic Complex, being a longtime supporter and donor, Mr. Kevin Black.
Awesome. Kudos to Coach Smith, we have one of the finest baseball programs in the state too, so. He's done a great job.
He has tremendous job, lives in countless areas. Steps away to, to be with a few of us tonight, so appreciate that.
Consent agenda?
No. Just need special recognition. So I need, I think, maybe if I got nine of them, consent agenda, but recognize what we need.
Makes sense to me?
And we'll do the 30-day period of public events, so we'll bring that back. Um, and that is our recommendation.
Joe, any, any way to, uh, just looking at the two that, uh, Mr. Spratlin and Mr. Maddox, any way to continue to memorialize those two, uh, as a result of the change, any thought given to that?
Um, I mean, they've got their sign, they're there to come in to the complex, designate that as Trumax Complex, and the swarm board for the softball team has, which is written his name on it.
This is in addition.
It's in addition.
That will remain.
That will remain, yes. And this is just naming the baseball field after Kevin Black, so we kind of sort of round out the, you know, the, the fields out there.
The baseball field is unnamed, it's the only thing without a name. It needs a name.
How about that?
Are you sure?
James is a great guy, like, he was, I remember him from my high school days.
Yeah.
He played with some really good baseball players.
Yeah. Yeah. It's very thick.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we're going to move into executive session now to discuss and deliberate upon the employment, employment, compensation, hiring, disciplinary action, dismissal, periodic evaluation, the rating of a public officer or employer to interview applicants for the position of superintendent. And we'll also discuss or vote to authorize negotiations to purchase, dispose of, or lease property, authorize ordering an appraisal related to the acquisition or disposal of real estate, enter into a contract to purchase, dispose of, or lease property, subject to approval in a subsequent public vote, or enter into an option to purchase, dispose of, or lease real estate, subject to approval in a subsequent public vote. Ricky?
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Thanks, everybody.